...in-house, but the electrical part of it was subbed out. And again, we're requesting that another $14,930 be spent for an outside consultant to inspect the electrical part of the job. So there is some that's -- it's not the full 150,000 that's available now, but it is, you know, approximately 100 and 120 or 115,000.
Okay, so can we find out how much it will cost to go further?
Sure. I mean, we can do a -- we can investigate that, and we can do a change order to this contract, or we can withhold awarding this till we find out exactly where we want to go with it, and then award it for that amount.
Okay, but let's not stop progress on this part of it. I'm just saying, let's look and see what else, if we could go further. I'm thinking 12 lights or six on each side, or how are we doing this?
Correct, six on each side.
Okay. Thank you.
The intent of the Streetscape Committee was to go all the way down to Montrose. And another point is that I don't believe the intent was to put them as close together as we have them on the north side of Irving. We intended to have them spaced out a little farther, as would be practical where the streets are and where sidewalks are and everything. But I think rather than putting in the 12, I agree with Alderman Winger that we should look at spacing them out a little bit farther, as practical, and going as far as we can. We do want to go down all the way to Montrose Avenue. Or we did. That was the intent.
We should.
Thank you.
Alman Kadala.
We'll just take right there. Actually, I thought the intent was that they're supposed to be closer together as we get closer to that intersection of Irving Park and Wooddale Road. And that this is a budget that replenishes itself. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Did you?
No, go ahead.
Budget replenishes itself 50,000 every year, no?
If I can just speak a little bit on that question. You find, as you try and lay these lights out, that there's so many obstructions, you really tend to be locked into a particular position. I mean, you might have a nominal spacing, which I -- maybe 120 feet or whatever it was, but you find that with driveways and sidewalks and other obstructions, you find you're locked into certain spots, no matter what you want your spacing to be, you have to adjust everything in the field. And there's not as much leeway on where to put those as you might think when you actually go to place them out there.
Mr. Murm.
Yeah, and this is not going to be the last year of the program. We do want to go all the way to Montrose, and I think that was the original intent. So what we can do with the leftover money this year, that money gets reallocated next year, and we add another 50,000 on to it next year. So the lights are going to keep going north, so we don't have to do them all this year. It's an ongoing project. So we do another 12, let's say, next year.
Mr. Nuziel.
I got two things, Gene. One, I know we got the residents here, they're listening to us spending money on lights, and they're looking for their sidewalks. Just want to let them know that this money comes from tourism, and we're mandated strictly to use this money for beautification. And that's why it's going towards the lights. The other thing is, this control box, Dave, we're putting in a new control box. Is it big enough to handle all the way to Montrose, or are we going to have to upgrade this later?
No, we're sizing the control box to be able to reach the ultimate build-out, and we're also adding, stubbing out extra conduits out of that, so we can pick those up and go further south.
Okay.
Alman Coles, did you have your hand up for that?
I'm not going to say a word.
Alman Roy Wesley.
Oh, you say anything, I never get picked. All right, I'm going to explain something.
I'm going down the line.
All right, okay. We made agreement to put all the lights on the west side, all the way to Montrose. Nothing on the east side, like the city of Wooddale has them here on the north side. They're all on the west side. That was supposed to be put in first, before of anything. And it goes all the way to Montrose. That was our deal when, oh, I think it was probably 2004, or something like that. Now, why are we going both sides at one time? We should do just one side, and then get that side done, and then we could decide what to do on the east side. But it was all supposed to go on the west side. If I could, if I have the papers, I'll look it up. I don't know. I got boxes and boxes of papers that I've saved. So I, we arrived on the west side, Streetscape said west side, and I remember that. And that was before some of yous came onto this, our board right now. All right? That's all I got to say.
Alman Roy Wesley.
I was just trying to get your attention, so you could call Joe.
I was standing with him. I think we discussed the contract. Alman Short.
Yeah, I was chairman of the committee at that time, and I agree with Mr. Coles, Alderman Coles. We did intend it to be on one side. But please, put the outlets on the top of the light.
We moved them out. We just moved them back.
Just to make sure. Because to put them on the bottom with the salt and water hitting it and burning them out all the time, just made no sense at all.
I will tell you that we did move all the ones up here on the top already.
You have?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
So we did do that.
Alman Winger.
Okay, so I understand, Mr. Murm, is that, you know, we can do them later, but why, I say why wait? And if we have the contractors out there doing this work, and they're ordering the lights, I believe there is some type of, you know, price break we get when we do them in larger bulk, which is kind of how things usually work. And that was my question initially. And I think I got a yes. I think there's some economy of scale that we would have here. And businesses are hungry for work right now. I mean, I think we're going to get some type of benefit here. And if the intent is to go down to Montrose initially, let's go as far as we can. I mean, that's what I say, right?
Yeah.
And I understand the argument of it was intended to be on one side, but it didn't go out for bid that way. And, I mean, let's keep it as it is. And if we go down further, then we can trail down one side. I'm okay with that. But let's do what we can in this year. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kadala.
Mr. Graff, when do you see this project breaking ground?
Well, there's still one remaining obstacle before we can start. I don't have a county highway permit yet. I applied for it about a month ago, and I don't have it yet. And I will keep trying to get it. County can take a long time to give you those permits. Once we have that in hand, we can get going. This project like this wouldn't be quite as weather-sensitive as other ones. I think they could work late in the year on it. But I'm just waiting for that county permit before we can get started.
Okay, that was my other question. And I would just like to ask if the motioner and the seconder would consider an amendment to the motion that not only do we award this contract to keep things rolling, but we also direct staff to investigate how many more lights they can add to the contract and still stay within the budgeted dollars that we have sitting there.
I would edit the motion.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posse carries. Next item is to award a contract for the lighting, for engineering study, contract award for a Strand associate not to exceed amount of $14,900, $930. But we're going to have to make this a little more, because if we extend this light project, there's more engineering. So I would probably put that into the motion that... Dave, how much more engineering? I have no clue.
Well, again, and the engineering, and this contract is for the construction inspection part of it. But you're correct, if we're going to extend it, we've got to extend the electrical part also. These plans were kind of done as a joint effort by both ourselves in-house and Strand, who did the electrical part of it. So the drawing up the plans and the laying out of the lights, we'll do ourselves in-house. I guess I would maybe allocate another $5,000, maybe say $20,000 to cover both, an extra to design the extension further south and for the construction management part of it. And we can certainly bring that back to committee if you want to see that before we do final approval of it.
Okay, then I had to make that a motion for 14,000, right? Now, I would send my motion and make it 20,000 occur with staff engineering not to exceed over $20,000 to Strand associate for the engineering part for this project. There's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question on the motion. Alman Nuziel, please.
Again, I'm in agreement with Alderman Winger. We don't want to slow the project down. If it looks like it's going to stall, the project's not going to get done. Let's get done while we can. And then, next year, we'll have to go at it. But I think in the future, in the future, we should figure on 24 lights and have them give us the prices. Because I think you guys used to engineer them first, one year, and then put the lights out for bid. I think I recall one meeting before I even got on the council.
Yeah, this one, this one, we engineered right before going out to bid with it, so there wasn't any advance time on that.
Alman Winger.
Do we do the similar type of work on the previous lights installed, where we had the engineering firm that looked at the electrical and what you're proposing here?
Last, you're referring to the lights north of Irving Park? That was, that whole entire design was designed, and the construction management was done by Banus, is my understanding.
And in this case, the design was done by us?
So for the, not the electrical part of it, sizing the wire, designing the control cabinet, the circuitry, the fuses, that was not done by them. But we did the survey, we drew the plans, we identified the lighting locations, and we drew the non-electrical details. So it was a kind of a joint effort between the two of us.
I'm only asking because this is like 18% of the current cost or so. So, I mean, it just seems high. That's all I, and is it customary to do this, or?
It's, I think it's high because it's a, not a high-dollar amount contract, so you tend to have a higher percentage. And it is kind of a specialty. I mean, street lighting, it's not, you know, everyone in the world that has an expertise on that. So I think that raises it a little bit also.
Yeah, so that's even selling me more that let's do all the lights we can, because, you know, to bring them out for another 12 isn't going to be that efficient. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reporting a recommendation for request partial payment MQ Construction School Street Reconstruction Project. We recommend that the payment, staff recommends payment to MQ Construction Company, an amount of $147,030, $30.81. That is the motion to approve that by staff recommendation. Okay, questions? Mr. Nuziel, you're paying a thousand tonight.
Dave, when this project started, there was some problems over there knocking over signs, they broke some pipes or whatnot. I know we were going to document that stuff. Is that stuff being taken care of or being deducted at some point here already?
Nothing's being deducted yet, and any deductions, I think we would do with the final payout and the final reconciliation of their quantities and our quantities and the work that was done. Certainly, signs, mailboxes, all of that will be replaced at their expense. The water main break that occurred, I, you know, I think there's still some question of whether they should be held responsible, since basically all they were doing is driving down the street, and it's just the water main was so shallow and brittle, it, you know, it snapped when they drove down there to do it. And I guess we can have that discussion, but I, personally, I didn't feel they should be held responsible for that. They didn't hit it while they were digging or anything. It was just the machinery going down there, trying to put in the new water main. But, you know, the other items, you know, we would do any of those deductions at the end.
Well, they would have put those signs up already, though, right? Did they do them, or we put in the new signs?
Well, I, either we have them do it, or we put them in and deduct it from their contract. I don't know which way we would go with it, but, I mean, yeah, the signs aren't up now because the street's still a mess up there.
Still under construction.
Okay.
Have they started laying asphalt yet, or dig it out yet?
They started digging out yesterday. They were digging out again this morning, and then the rain hit, and they had to stop. They've, you know, they're still planning on doing the asphalt next week, and it's all dependent on the weather at this point. They need about four or five days of sunny weather to get that taken care of.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Alman Roy Wesley first.
Thank you. What's the projection date of the street being done?
As of right now, they're still planning on paving next week.
Being completed.
Of everything being completed, I don't have a final update on that, but in the meantime, waiting to get the street done, they've done almost all of the miscellaneous odds and ends out there, with the exception of the final landscaping, topsoil sodding and that restoration, which could certainly get done within a week. So, once they get the paving done within a week, they could get everything else done.
It just seems like this project's going awful slow, is my own person, is my own personal opinion.
There have been some delays on it.
Okay, Mr. Nuziel, since you had your hand up again, did you care to say anything?
Quick question on this. I know we're not doing a compaction test, we're eyeballing it. I think it's in the best interest of the council that we start having some compaction tests done on our, on our work. If we expect compaction tests on people who come in and build, I think we should do it for our stuff, for our streets.
No, we, we'll do a proof roll for this project. I mean, we'll do nothing different on this project than we would for any development or anything.
There's going to be a compaction test on the gravel once?
Yeah, proof roll is a compaction test of the subgrade.
Well, I thought we just said earlier on the alley, we don't, we didn't do it, we just kind of look at it.
We did just a visual inspection on the alleys for this, for a public street.
We do it.
We would do like a higher, higher level of testing on it, yeah. Plus full testing on the asphalt when it goes down. We have a, we have a testing consultant retained, we have, and they'll be out there for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor, there's a second. Any other questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Pay request for RW Dunhaman 2008 street improvement. Dave, how much was that payment I'm missing? I misplaced it somewhere. Could you give me?
Well, this one, and if you read through my memo, we were trying to address here a little bit of the issue of some of the problems with the pavement on some of the cul-de-sacs and Royal Oaks subdivision. And the payment we're recommending to RW Dunhaman, which included subtracting some money from that, was $272,256.88. I will mention, since I wrote this memo, I met with them out there.
Okay.
The areas in question are pretty small. It's less than the $13,000 we're recommending to retain. And Dunhaman has offered to give it a, an additional warranty on that, and give a two-year warranty on those areas. And that's, I guess, something else for the council to consider. If we want to leave those be for now, go with the two-year warranty and see how they hold up. So I guess the question is whether, whether to pay Dunhaman the full amount of their requested invoice, or have an additional deduction on it for those aerial, areas in Royal Oaks? Or we can talk about doing some other game plan for those areas in Royal Oaks?
Well, I will tell you, I'm not in favor of giving them the whole amount that they're asking for. Because I still like to know where they got asphalt at 7:30 at night, to lay the Oak Street. I know the test came back fine, but I really like to know where they got asphalt that early, and did they put the binder, the oil underneath, which we, in fact, handed pictures in for that? I know the test came back fine, but I still want my answer. Alman Nuziel, please, I know you had your hand up.
Dave, on this memo here, I see Dunhaman's being real generous in offering to do a six-inch patch and charging us extra. It's really nice of them, since we're paying them the first time to do the job right. Just curious, if they rip out the asphalt that's garbage and put a frame over there, and let the frame sit while the asphalt sits, will that, will that make a, make it more solid and hold up? Or what's the deal? I'm, you know, it's not my expertise, but I think if they would have framed those cul-de-sacs, it might have held up a little better.
Framed with, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, like they do for concrete.
Like, will it curb around it?
Well, no. Don't they, when they?
Oh, with forms?
Yeah, with a form.
Yeah, and form blacktop.
I've never seen asphalt done with forms.
Because, I mean, they're going to guarantee it for two years. Well, I'll tell you right now, it's broken, so they got to fix it.
And again, Dunhaman's contention is that the base is so weak under those streets that they couldn't get it, get the asphalt to sit right, and couldn't get it compacted. So that's their claim on it, and I, I mean, the, those streets are in bad condition out there. I mean, I don't think anyone denies that.
But when you bid a job, you take those things into consideration when you're bidding the job, right? They got the job, they should do it right. Sorry, I'm stickler for that stuff.
Again, I can relay their position, and we're actually talking about some pretty small areas, though. It's not the entire cul-de-sac, it's not the entire circle.
That's true.
I guess anyway, I mean, I've listed them here, anyone who's interested in going out and looking at them. It's not, it's not a pavement failure, it's, there's some additional tearing or seams that have opened up in parts of it.
Alman Roy Wesley.
Dave, the question is, when you're saying warranty, where does this line of warranty come in? Is there, if it's just cracked a little, or who caused that?
Ah, who, well, it would be if the asphalt fails. I mean, if it actually, if it comes out, comes apart.
Like, Nuziel said, there's, some sections are already coming apart, especially on Pine Tree Lane.
Well, they have some, some seams opening up in them.
Seams? I tell you, if you put a plow in that for one year, that's going to come out, guarantee you. This, Alderman Coles' ward and Alderman Nuziel's ward, and whatever they feel like, this, they have to answer to the people, so I'm going to go with what they feel about.
Alman Coles.
Well, I was talking to somebody that is on the board of Royal Oaks Homeowners Association last Sunday, and he thanked me for having some of the streets being done. And he said that realized that some of the base of the streets weren't very good. And if the space isn't right, the top of, top will not stay. We all know that, and we should know that anyway. But, you know, Dunhaman has done the work, and they've done part of the work, and they've done other work besides, in the city, besides in Royal Oaks. And when you make an agreement with a company, they should at least get paid. Now, if they're willing to come back, or give us a two-year guarantee, or something, that's, they put that in writing, and we can always have them come back. And I, I'm a strong believer that when you make an agreement with a company, that you're going to pay them X number of dollars to do a job, and that's throughout the city. Now, I'm certainly sure they've done some streets that are in Ward Four, Ward Two, Ward Three, and Ward One. And I'm a strict believer that they should at least get paid for it. And I may have put myself on a, somebody might go after me or anything, but I don't care. I've been called at many times. And I think we should pay them. And if they're giving us a two-year warranty, it's a lot more than what they gave us a warranty on my street, which they gave me nothing. And our street was patched with a eight-foot by 10-foot patch in the middle of a brand-new street. So I insist, I, I really believe that they should get their check. That's my opinion.
Alman?
Is that it, Joe?
Alman Kadala.
You know, as a construction manager, I have some mixed emotions about this one. Alderman Coles is right. We have a contract with this company, they did the work, they're willing to stand behind it. It's a matter of managing the risk and managing your subcontractor, and Dave, I have no doubt that you can and will do that. But at the same time, as a construction manager who's watched over a lot of blacktop installs, I agree that you don't know necessarily that you've got a base problem when you bid the job. But I've never opened up blacktop and had, you know, bad compaction underneath, and not had the contractor at least bring it up to me. So, they brought it up to you before they relayed?
They brought up that there were problems with the base out there, which we knew, and that.
Yeah.
I told them to go ahead and pave, and I still stand by that decision, because what else are we going to do? Tear out everything out there? The streets are scheduled for reconstruction in something like five years, it would make no sense to do that. We didn't have the money to do it anyway, or do nothing out there. I mean, that's what we were faced with.
Okay.
So, again, this, this is a patch. This was not of the full resurfacing treatment. We don't do pavement cores or soil borings for these streets like we do for the full resurfacing candidates. And it is a, you know, it is meant to just hold them together.
Okay.
I mean, not, not to make any excuses for poor workmanship, but there is a different standard in all of our ends on these streets versus the ones that were the complete resurfacing with, you know, the fabric, the pavement cores ahead of time, the curb and gutter replacements, the base patching that we do on the other ones. None of that was included with these streets, with the Royal Oak streets.
You gave me the information I needed to make my decision here. I mean, basically, I, and I trust you as being a professional in this industry, I wanted to know that they came to you and said there was a problem, and that you made an executive decision to say, we can't leave the street torn apart, we've got to pave it, we know it's a temporary solution anyway. You did your own risk analysis, you did what you were supposed to, they did what they were supposed to. I'm having a hard time finding validity in the argument to not pay them right now.
Okay. I have two questions. Two-year warranty, when does the warranty start? And follow up with that question, we'll loop it together, is that two-years warranty for all the work that they did in the city, or does that section?
No, their proposal is two-year warranty for just those sections, and it would start the day that, their proposal again is it would start the day that they did the work.
Well, the day that they started the work, or completed the work?
The day that they did those, that they paved those cul-de-sacs.
So we already got a couple months into this, since they did that project?
Probably one month, I'm going to say, since they did those cul-de-sacs.
Okay. My concern still, and I address, and I say we should pay the bill, but I still want that other street added into the warranty.
Oh, okay, you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, I can.
I want that added in, because if they laid asphalt at 7:30 at night, I'm still trying to figure out where they got asphalt at 7:30 at night. And I'm still trying to figure out why they didn't put the oil base down before adding the asphalt. So I have no problem approving this, provided that Oak Street is in a two-year project, guaranteed.
I mentioned a point here, when it does come time to either approve or not approve, let's make sure we're all on the same page in the dollar amount we're talking about, because the dollar amount on their invoice is one amount, and the dollar amount in my memo was a different one.
We're going with your amount.
Because that's, that's.
And your amount was?
That's an additional retainage that I put in there, that was before a lot of these other discussions, just so we're all clear about that.
Right, so your amount is $272,256.88. Is that the amount you got?
Right, that includes the normal retainage plus an additional $13,000 retainage for those cul-de-sacs.
Right. So that will be my motion to approve that amount. Do I have a second? Mr. Nuziel. I could get a second on the floor.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Nuziel, have a question?
Yeah, about three weeks ago, we were making the second payment to these, these gentlemen, and I got no problem paying somebody when they're working. No problem at all. I remember at that meeting, and I know Assistant City Manager made a note... at that meeting, and I know Assistant City Manager made a note, I said, "I'd like to know if the punch list was done by the time these guys come back and when they're gonna fix these cul-de-sacs." And I'm sure we've had that discussion, and we know when that's gonna take place, right?
Well, at this, as, as far as the punch list goes, other than the cul-de-sac, there's only, they've been working very hard the last couple of days to try and get everything done. They wanted to get everything done before this meeting. There's only one item that I know of that didn't get done, other than the cul-de-sacs. The reason they, they haven't done the cul-de-sacs is they're still waiting to decide, "Do we want to do a six-inch patch? Do we want to leave it the way it is, um, with an extended warranty?" I don't think anyone at this point is recommending, uh, milling off the two inches and putting down another two inches. So, it's, it's that question that I, that we need to decide.
Did they fix that ditch that was on commercial?
They ground off, um, they ground off the lip that was on there.
The one that was seen cold by a sewer?
Well, the dip by the sewer, I, I don't think that was Dunhaman's fault. I think that, I, we probably need to adjust that sewer upwards or do something with it. But, they fixed that bump.
Okay.
They fixed the bump that was on there.
All right. So, there's a motion. Aldman, come here.
I think it's important to be clear, though. I know that, Mr. Graff, you're asking for, you know, the discussion on Royal Oaks. And I hear Alderman Eugene Wesley also asking to, you know, tie this into another street getting in the warranty. But, right now, you can't guarantee whether they're gonna do that or not, right?
Well, no. But, again, we, you know, we're not, we haven't finalized the contract. We still have retainage. Everything would, would come back to this committee again for the next payment request or to finalize it out. Right? This, this is a, an interim payment.
Right. So, this is gonna go through without that agreement in place?
That, that's fine. But, I'm, I will tell, I'll make it perfectly clear tonight that if the Oak Street is not currently warranty, my motion will, to deny any more payment to them until that street's in there. Because I asked for, I asked before, where they got the asphalt at seven-thirty at night, and no oil was put down on there. I have a concern on a street that Dunhaman did. Years ago, Dunhaman was the greatest company to do work in, in this town, okay? I don't know what happened here. Dunhaman, I thought this was probably, my concern, this was the worst resurfacing projects I have seen in this whole entire town, since I've been seeing on this council. I will tell you that right now. Okay? I have no problem doing it. I'm distracting staff that Oak Avenue needs to be negotiated in a two-year warranty.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Jump in. I'll, I can ask him about that tomorrow, and I can have that information for you, but, you know, before next Thursday's council.
That's fine. We'll prove it, we'll prove it tonight. But, I'm just saying, I would like that added into the, Aldman, Newzio.
Dave, just to make sure I'm clear. So, if the council takes the two-year warranty, they're leaving the cul-de-sacs as they are right now? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes.
Like, well, yeah. I mean, you don't...
We taking the warranty, but we're gonna leave the cracked streets and that mess we got? Is that?
Correct, if you choose to do that.
And the six?
I mean, you don't have, you don't have to even make that decision tonight. I mean, if you want to decide, if you want to approve the pay request as it's written with additional retainage, we can take up that issue with a warranty or what we're gonna do out there, again, sometime before we finalize the job out. You don't have to make...
And the six-inch patch, are they talking about six inches of asphalt, or what are they, I'm, what do you?
Yeah, six inches of patch would be, six-inch patch would be digging out six inches deep, which, again, we don't, that's typically what we do on the streets when we do patching after they grind. We don't know for a fact that that gets us down to solid ground or not. I mean, that's just what our typical patches on a residential street.
So, we take the two-year warranty. I understand what their extra retaining, and they leave it, and we get no patch?
Again, that, that doesn't have to be decided tonight if you don't want to do that tonight.
But, if that does get worse, then it falls under repair for them. If it gets worse than what it is now, it falls under repair for them. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, if it gets worse than what the way it is, Dave liable for it to fix it.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Opposed.
To oppose. Okay.
I don't like that.
Easy. Okay. Items to consider, future meeting. Brush pickup and the other items?
Yeah.
Mr. Luton?
I hope this goes here, 'cause I don't want to be talking out of turn. But, um, the post office resurfaced their postal area, and they put the handicap incorrectly. They had it incorrectly a couple of years ago. About a year ago, I complained about it and, to the police department, and they redid it, and they corrected it because people were getting tickets because their handicap, stick, handicap pole is not in front of the handicap parking area. So, when somebody parks in the area in front of the sign, which is not handicap, they end up getting a ticket. And when I saw that actually happen, that's when I complained about it. The postmaster fixed it, and it was correctly marked for the last year. Now, they resurfaced it, and they put it back to the way it was before it was made right. And I, um, I'd like to have our people go out there and make sure that they get the markings correctly, uh, or do, move that sign because the sign is in front of a normal parking.
First of all, I believe it's a private property. Second of all, I think the police department could do that. Go ahead.
We have no jurisdiction over, over a post office. They don't have to come to us for a permit. They don't have to come to us for a plan review. Um, the federal government doesn't, unless they're doing something like a water main tap or something on our facilities, we don't, we can't make them do it. I mean, we can check it against our standards and let them know whether it meets it or not, but we, we can't enforce anything out there.
We can ask the police chief, go over there and talk to them and see if they get that correct. Mr. Newzio?
Uh, something, compaction. If we're doing an alley or something.
Okay.
Resurfacing. I, I'd like to see some...